You know what, that's really funny.
I love his partner.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Hi.
Hi Sylvia.
Hello.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, July the first, 2019. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Village Board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Alrich?
Here.
Trustee Brumberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Here. We have a quorum. For those who are wondering, that wasn't that Promote Shaw? It's the Deputy Village Clerk Sylvia Luke. So, welcome Sylvia.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Alrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Clean Green Skokie. Presentation will be made by our Director of Marketing and Communications, Ann Tennis. Welcome in.
It's on now.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may, just take a moment before I start into the Clean Green Skokie. I thought you would want me to point out that our new Fine Arts Commission Chair Pam Garberini is in the...
She's next.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Nope. I've got it highlighted right here.
Sorry, Mayor. Trying to be efficient. Good evening, and thank you for allowing the recognition of the Clean Green Skokie volunteers to take place at tonight's Village Board meeting. Clean Green Skokie, this year was in its fifth year. We had a very robust response from the community, some heartwarming stories and really wonderful stories of community involvement, some of which have been catalogued in the July edition of New Skokie that either arrived in your home hopefully Saturday, or some of them might arrive today and tomorrow. But I would like to just take a moment to introduce a few of the groups that cleaned. This is a big vacation week for people, so we weren't able to get a majority of the groups, but we have some strong and active groups here that I'd like to introduce you to and to tell you just briefly about their volunteerism. I'd like to start with the O'Leary family. Would you kindly stand? So Indira O'Leary is a resident, lives on the north side of Old Orchard Road, near Old Orchard, and she and her family, her son is here, and forgive me, I forget your name, young man, Habib, cleaned the north side of Old Orchard, or south side of Old Orchard Road for what seemed like days on end in April, because they would go out to clean and then we'd have a monsoon. And then they'd go out to clean and then we'd have a snowstorm. But they persevered, and I think you were out there at least four or five different times. She was great. She would call me. She came for extra supplies once. She would always let me know so that I could be in touch with our Public Works Department. So this family worked very hard on the south side of Old Orchard Road. So I think...
(applause)
The next on the list is Jennifer Salz with Turning Point. Jen, if you'd be kind enough to stand. Jen is on staff with Turning Point. Turning Point cleaned, and I think trustee Roberts, were you involved in that one? Or you were...
I wish I was.
You were there in spirit, I believe. They cleaned, they had a cadre of volunteers that cleaned on Skokie Boulevard between Oakton and, how far north do you go?
To Carroll.
To Carroll, right.
From our facility north to Carroll.
Right. On the Sunday in April, when we did have the freak snowstorm, but didn't stop them. They were all out there. And Turning Point also is part of our ongoing Adopt a Street initiative. So Jen, thank you for representing Turning Point, for the volunteerism.
(applause)
There's another group, and I, forgive me, because I don't know if they're here, the Benetis family, Ms. Bennet, Jocelyn, Ms. Benetis? They were going to be here tonight. I'm sorry that they're not, but I want to just tell you their story quickly. They live in just the area, just north of Oakton Park. And Ms. Benetis called me one day and said that her six-year-old son was so troubled by the litter in their neighborhood that she signed them up to clean. So again, you know, they're not here, but I'd like to applaud them anyway. We have the group from District 69. It is the, Allison, help me, the name of the group?
Positive Action.
Positive Action Group with District 69. Would you all stand?
(applause) Come on, there's more. Okay. This group of enthusiastic volunteers, along with the assistance of some staff members
from District 69, cleaned Laurel Park one day, and we're, again, really grateful. They've been a part of Clean Green Skokie for a number of years, and we're very grateful for your volunteerism. Thank you all so much. Lastly, we have the Central United Methodist Church Green Team. If you'd kindly stand. There's some familiar faces.
Wow. (applause)
So this group cleaned over the course of, I think, a couple of weekdays in April. They cleaned one of the K-streets from Maine to Oakton. I think they even went a little further south, and then they cleaned Oakton Park. And have I missed any of the areas you cleaned?
And Knox Avenue.
Knox. So it was Knox Avenue, from stem to stern, and they cleaned Oakton Park. So thank you very, very much.
(applause)
So I'm going to quickly read the names of the rest of our Clean Green Skokie 2019 volunteers. Paul and Charles Williams and the Birchwood Avenue Neighbors, District 73 and a half PTO, the Heft Family, brand-new Skokie residents who called up and wanted to volunteer. Amy Engstrom and the Clean Bunch, the Girl Scout, we have three, two Girl Scout troops, Troops Number 43196 and 42163, Cub Scout Pack 968, Devonshire School Third Grade Classes led by Ms. Lorondi and Ms. Peterson, East Prairie Fourth and Fifth Graders led by Dana Clapper, Service Master by Simons, the Curl Family, the Gillespie Family, Sandy Albom, just an individual who walked in one day and said, "How can I help?", and she wanted supplies. Niles North Bridges Program, Ramses Serrano, again, an individual, the Sulelas Family, Lanza Tech, Charles River Labs, Lena Suarez, another individual, the Skokie Public Library Staff, and the Village of Skokie Management Team. These groups really demonstrated that groups can make a difference, but individual action can help, it helps too. Collectively, these groups, families, and individuals cleaned numerous Skokie parks, school grounds, stretches of Skokie streets, and even an alley or two. We're grateful for all their efforts. I think also special thanks is in order to the crews from the village's Public Works Department, and also from the Skokie Park District and the school districts involved, who were taking care of the bags of litter and made sure that once they were collected and sealed, that they came by in a timely manner to clean them up. So just if we could give one more round of applause.
(applause)
Lastly, I would like to quickly acknowledge members of the village's Litter Task Force. Clean Green Skokie and other ongoing litter initiatives are an important part of that group's work. And Chairman Jeff Berman is here tonight, the chairman of the task force. I know Mo Yanes is here. I don't know that anyone else from the task force is here. We have a meeting tomorrow night, but I wanted to, oh, and trustee Sutker and Gray Keeler also served with distinction on that, on that task force. So we're grateful to everyone for their volunteerism and involvement. And of course, you know that my colleague, Public Works Director Max Slankard, joins me as a, also as a staff liaison to that group. So again, my personal thanks to the Clean Green Skokie folks. I know you joined me in thanking them. It was a great effort, and your efforts are just so much appreciated by the community. So thank you.
(applause) And just as it just so happens, what landed in the mail today, but the village's newsletter, which also thanks everybody enlists, all of the participants this year, it's a growing list.
It is.
And I especially, Jeff, would you stand just for a moment? Jeff Berman. (applause) I, I think most of us know Jeff very well. One of the quietest, nicest people you would ever want to know, but he has been poking and prodding us incessantly. When Jeff says, "I think you need to do something", my only advice is do it, because eventually you are going to wind up doing it, because he does not stop. But he has inspired all of us to do the Clean Green Skokie, and a lot of the success is due to you, Jeff. So thank you for everything you've done to help us.
One last... One last thing, there is a reception out in the north end of, or the east end of the lobby for all the Clean Green Skokie volunteers and their families, and anyone else who is in the room. The meeting ends, and you want to come out and grab a bite, please join us.
Thank you. And now, I would like to introduce Pam Garberini, who is the new Chair of the Skokie Fine Arts Commission. And I'm not sure, is Jeff Rhodes here this evening? He had said he was going to try and make it, and I wasn't sure if he was able to or not, but I've known Pam for quite a long time. Neither of us will tell you the number of years, but it goes back to PTA at Highland School, which was a while ago. But Pam has been a member of the Fine Arts Commission and a driving force behind it, along with our longtime Chairman Andrea Segal. And this evening, the board through the consent agenda has approved Pam as Andrea's successor. And I couldn't be happier. When I called Pam to ask her if she would undertake it, I thought she would, but I wasn't entirely sure that she would, because much like Jeff, she is on the quiet side, but much like Jeff, she is also a very insistent person. And any of you who have attended any of the SOAR events at the Performing Arts Center, where we get upwards of five or six hundred young people from around all of the schools in Skokie displaying their art, it's as a result of the Fine Arts Commission, and Pam has been one of the ones who's been the prime organizer. So Pam, I want to thank you on behalf of the board, and I usually, in a situation like this, I say, "We will put you to work", but she's already been at work for a number of years. So thank you very much for agreeing to be the Chair. We appreciate it. And next on the agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockery.
Thank you, Mayor Van Duzen and village board members. Good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the water rate ordinance for fiscal year 2020. For fiscal year 2020, a 3% increase is recommended to fund all water-related activities for the coming year. Water infrastructure improvements of approximately 5.1 million are planned for the coming fiscal year. Even with the rate increase, Skokie's water rate remains the second lowest among area municipalities. The slide in front of us this evening illustrates this point with, on the right side of the chart, is the lowest community, and then the second smokestack or bar is Skokie's current rate, and then the proposed rate is the third bar from the right, showing that we will be, remain the second lowest water rate amongst our comparable communities. The impact of the recommended rate adjustment would result in an average residential monthly increase of $1.91. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval. The final ordinance will be brought before the board at the July 15 meeting for final consideration.
A motion on the manager's recommendation of a 3.5% increase to fund all water-related activities for the coming year is in order. Trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Alrich. Are there any questions, comments? Trustee Alrich.
I don't know if this question is in line, but my understanding is that there's also a charge in other municipalities for sewer, is that right? And we don't charge that?
That is correct. And so the rates in the, in the slide before us includes all water-related charges, water and sewer in some communities. We elect to only charge a water rate, and so that is correct. We do not have a sewer charge, or all of the communities up there, except for us, and one other, have a sewer-specific charge.
So what goes to cover for the sewer, maintaining the sewer system?
It's the water rates.
The water rate? Okay. And we're still able to be the second lowest?
That's right.
In the seventeen of them, I counted, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Of the seventeen communities?
That's good.
We're the second lowest for water and sewer rates, and for maintaining that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Trustee Roberts.
John, could you, among the $5.1 million improvements, it's more than just the water that comes out of our tap, could you give, I thought it would be helpful to the residents to know, what are, just in general terms, what are some of the major projects that are going to be the capital improvements in this coming year, capital year budget?
Sure. The, every year, we work to maintain the water infrastructure, and so what we do is we stay ahead of street resurfacing. And so we assess the water main breaks that occur in town and water lines that are failing, and then we work to replace those. And then we always want to replace the underground infrastructure, whether it's water or sewer, prior to streets being resurfaced. And so we always work to stay ahead of street resurfacing, and that drives most of our water infrastructure improvements.
Any other comments or questions? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Alrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye. The motion passes.
Item B is regarding an amendment to Chapter 95, Right-of-Way Vacations. The Village of Skokie Public Alley and Street Vacation Program was established in 2005 with the goal of vacating unimproved and unopened residential public alleys and streets that are not required for public access or other village purposes. This program has been very successful with 125 alleys and 12 streets being vacated to date. Many of the remaining rights-of-way are more difficult to vacate, given the presence of utilities, adjacent non-residential uses, and unofficial uses of the properties. While most right-of-ways vacations are free to adjacent residential property owners, given the fee structure in this chapter, Rights-of-Way in the Skokie Village Code, property owners who receive more than 18 feet of front footage through vacation pay fair market value for that land. Village staff believes this fee structure deters vacation, and thus recommends amending this chapter, Chapter 95, to reflect a new fee structure that would eliminate the fair market value requirement for residential property owners, except when sufficient land is obtained to create one or more additional buildable lots. When a significant amount of land is directed to the residential property owner, a fee of $1,000 to cover the village expenses will be applied. Non-residential property owners or businesses would be subject to the fair market value fee. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board to authorize Corporation Council to draft the necessary code amendments.
A motion on the manager's recommendation to amend Chapter 95, Right-of-Way Vacations in the Village Code. Trustee Brumberg, seconded by trustee Klein. Are there any comments or questions? I see Peter Pyer and Julian Prendy are in the background this evening. Any comments or questions? Trustee Sucker.
I just wanted clarification on if the vacated land is divided equally amongst all abutting property owners, no compensation will be due to the village. Can you further explain that to me?
Sure. Peter Pyer has managed this program since day one and has worked through some of the nuances through the years, and really what we have done is, from the experience, tried to improve the program with the recommendation for, before you this evening. And so I'd like to ask Peter to respond to that question.
Yes. In most cases, land is separated, you know, for an alley or street, it's divided between the properties adjacent to it, because that's where the property originally came from. So in those cases, and usually they get a small amount of land, and an alley is 16 feet wide, so they each get eight feet. It really doesn't add any value to the property, and it doesn't really cause any problems with taxes or anything like that. It just eliminates an alley that we don't use. We usually clean it up, take away dangerous trees, and then hand it over to the neighboring properties.
So does that have to be under a certain amount of feet for that?
Well, that, no, because, well, well, they are going to be below that, because an alley is 16 feet wide. The problem comes in where you have a vacated street. Street right-of-ways are usually 66 feet wide, and so when you divide it up, you get 33 feet going in each direction. Or in some cases, state law allows us to direct it to one property owner, if that's the wish. If, if it turns out that they become a buildable lot, where they can create two lots, then they have to pay for it, and we get an appraiser and determine what the value is. But there's also the provision for this lesser amount, where in the past, we've asked for payment for that 18 feet.
Yeah.
And usually, property owners won't do it, because they're, you know, they're maintaining it, they're using it, but there's really no reason that they would want to do it, because they'd end up paying $20,000 or $30,000 for a piece of land that they, that really does not add to the value of their property. So this is really to maybe spur this on, but we just had a request to re-vacate a portion of Lewis Terrace that was at the last plan commission meeting, and that kind of brought us to our attention. And the property owner has been maintaining it for the last 10 years, I believe he said. And, you know, he has no intention of buying it unless it's given to him, and then, then he may consider making improvements to his home and increase the value of that in a certain way. But really, it's not enough to make it worth it for him to buy it.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Roberts.
So the way I understand the ordinance, Peter, is when a property owner initiates and wants to vacate a piece of adjoining property, they have to pay fair market value?
Well...
If it's initiated by the property owner?
We would like to eliminate that, so that it is only in cases where the property owner gets enough to make a second lot, and that's where the concern comes in, where they are profiting significantly from it. But anything less than that, in the case of Lewis Terrace, it was a property owner who petitioned to do it. The village could have done it on his behalf, but he was ready to go ahead and he wanted to do it. Interesting enough, just across the street from him, he's on Kedvale, there's another portion of Lewis Terrace where the two property owners are using it as driveways. And so basically, the village is taking the liability for their driveways and anything that happens on there, and it really should be given back to them.
So we've been voting on these vacations, well, while I've been on the board since 2004, so how, you know, we seem to get some, and then there's a period where we have none. Do most of these come to your attention, or the village's attention through a property owner, or is it a development that happens? Or why do these come to the attention of the village usually?
Well, many of them are as part of our program, and alleys and street vacation program, which the village initiated in 2005. However, we went through and did many of the easier ones. I mean, we did large subdivisions, any place where we could find alley that was not really encumbered in some way that would cause problems. Lately, we pick out one or two, maybe three a year, that we can get at that are more difficult. And then, then you do see, most of them recently have been petitioned by retail, I mean, commercial people or industrial, who want to consolidate lots. In those cases, they pay for the property. And, but, so that's why you see them in dribbles coming in. It's also a time constraint on staff. We, you know, it takes a while, we have to hire the appraiser, we have to check out everything, we have to make sure that, that no utilities or other problems exist. Because sometimes there are alleys that would appear, or streets that would appear to be candidates for vacation, but then we find out there's a 30-inch sewer or something in there that we really would want to protect, instead of giving to a property owner. Also, John came by today and asked how many of these are available still. It's hard to tell, because our priority has been on alleys and not on streets. But taking a quick look at the map before the meeting, I counted about 10 of them that still exist. Lately, we've seen a couple of basketball courts on top of them and other things, so, you know, they're, it's not something we've been, you know, on streets has not been a high priority, and the neighbors and property owners are really using them, and really should be given over to the property owners.
And there's good public policy behind this. It certainly reduces our liability on these pieces of property and...
Definitely.
...the maintenance costs to maintain the properties.
Yes, because there's trees and other things that have to be taken care of, and it is an ongoing maintenance issue.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Alrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Peter.
Items C and D were approved with tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lorge.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Item A on my report was part of the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting, and it was adopted at that time, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. The final item this evening is citizen comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? Yes. If we could have your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Tolleson. I live at 5,000 Oakton Street. We're right next door to the new development that's coming, the Homewood Suites Hotel. We, or I requested and received a traffic study about how, what would happen at the corner of Oakton and Niles Avenue, and during rush hour, it's, traffic will double there. And we're at Town Square condominiums, we're not opposed to progress, but we are opposed to never getting out of our garage again. So we have two garages that open into Niles Avenue, and I understand the proposal is that Oakton Terrace will be made a real street. And if it does, we would hope that it could be one-way going east, and then curve out onto, in front of Illinois Science and Technology, out onto Cyril Parkway. Just here to discuss that and hope that, that can be considered, that Oakton Terrace be made one-way going east.
Yep. There, there are no set plans.
Okay.
What you have seen is what I would call a general scheme. We have a ways to go yet.
Okay, great.
So what I can assure you is, we will keep in mind your concerns. Very much appreciate your bringing to our attention. I wasn't aware of the difficulties that apparently this could cause you, so I would request that you stay in touch with the village manager.
Will do.
We still have a ways to go.
Okay.
So it's good to know of the potential problem upfront, so I thank you for alerting us to it.
Thank you.
And we'll do our best.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll all be at the meeting on July 11th to talk about it. Thank you so much.
Sure. You're welcome. I have two things I want... I have two things I want to bring to everybody's attention. One is, I believe it was two weeks ago now, John and I attended a reception, I think Trustee Gray Keeler was there as well, in honor of Diana Hunter.
I was there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, boy. I'm in trouble. For the record, the Library Board of Trustees wanted to honor Diana for, believe it or not, 50 years of service on the Library Board. That's pretty extraordinary. And as somebody, along with everybody else who has known Diana for many years, the library really is, next to her husband, the most important thing in her life. She not only was behind both of the improvement, including the currently proposed improvement to the library, but she also had a regional vision for libraries. She was Vice President of the North Suburban Library System. She also was a Director of the Illinois State Public Library Board of Directors. We all want to join with the Library Board in saluting Diana for all of these years of service. We're proud of the library. As I think many of you already know, a couple of years ago, they won the National Gold Medal as one of the five best public libraries in the United States. Much of that goes to the vision of Diana and the members of the Library Board, so I want to recognize her. And also, I just want to bring everybody up to date. A couple months ago, I had brought to everybody's attention that the village had signed on as a signatory to an amicus brief, and the Supreme Court argument dealing with the census, as you're all aware, I think. It's been rather controversial. Last week, I'm very proud to say, our argument was accepted by the Supreme Court, and in a reading, in a reading of Justice Roberts' comments, he adopted much of the argument that we had made in our amicus. I'm particularly proud because, and I'm going to take a plug here again, the census is one of the most important functions that we do. It's one of the least glamorous as well, but it locks in our future for the next 10 years. And the village is a recipient of federal money in a couple different programs. Some of it is formula, which of course depends on our population count. What we do not want is to do anything that would detour people from being counted. The last couple census, we've had a disagreement with the count. We thought we were undercounted by a couple thousand. This year, we're, we're making a particularly special effort, given the diversity of our population. So it's a, at least a temporary, hopefully a permanent victory, and I'm proud of the fact that there were only five municipalities across the country that saw fit to join in the amicus brief. And I want to thank Michael, he isn't here this evening, but Jim McCarthy, our litigator, as well as the entire team that participated in putting the brief together. And I'll end just with this, we only had something like two weeks to put the whole thing together, and I'm proud of the fact that we managed to get it done, and that we had a winning argument, five to four, but it still is a victory nevertheless. So, Michael, thank you, and the legal staff. And is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If we could have your name and address, please.
Of course.
Thank you.
My name is Mickey Gordon. I live at 8843 Kenneth Terrace in Skokie. I've been on that block for almost 48 years, and for the first time, they're doing our driveways and our block. I've called the village three times, because they were only doing a partial part of my dri, in the end of my driveway, and it isn't done right, and the men who are doing the work even agreed with me. And I would like to know what I'm supposed to do. It's very frustrating.
Talk to John Lockery. He's the CEO.
Okay. Because I, I have names of the people I called...
Okay.
...and I didn't get any result.
Give us, as soon as we adjourn, give us your name and a phone number.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Surely. You're welcome. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, I think it's Trustee Roberts.
Just, since we have a short meeting, Mayor, I just want to acknowledge, we reaffirmed, re-upped one of our economic development commissioners, Brad Rosen, was reappointed tonight, so congratulations to Brad.
Yes. Brad?
And, and I wish, on behalf, happy, thanks, or forth to light everyone, and, and I hope you all come out to the parade, and I make a motion to adjourn.
See everybody at the parade.